Meeting order.
How old is your daughter?
Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, October 4, 2023. May you have a roll call, please.
Yes. Daniel Henderson. Michael Widmer.
Present.
Bill Houck. Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Enlove.
Here in spirit.
John Glansberg. My Lin Wen. Casey Mensah. Chris Milton.
Here.
Alan Jones for Dave Solero.
Here.
Mervyn Wright.
Here.
Kara Steenland.
Here.
We have a quorum.
There's any, are there members of the public that would like to comment on anything other than the agenda? I'd like to have the agenda approved. Move to approve that's presented.
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number four, approval of the minutes from August 2nd, Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Were there any comments?
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second, Steenland.
I'm sorry?
Second?
Oh, okay.
Steenland.
Thank you. Can I hear?
Call and order, call out.
Call for a vote, excuse me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, presentation on the Truckee Meadows Stormwater Quality Management Program and action discussion. Possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Plan, Water Commission to approve the Truckee Meadows Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee's watershed assessment, scope of work, and budget not to exceed $65,000 for the fiscal year 2024. Birgit.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I'm Birgit Widdgarden, water management planner for the record, and I'd like to do, excuse me, I'd like to introduce Teresa Jones, who is a senior civil engineer with City of Reno, and she is also the coordinator for the Truckee Meadows Permit Coordinating Committee, and she's here to give a short presentation on the work that they do that we currently fund, as well as make a request for some additional funding for watershed assessments. Teresa.
All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you the activities of the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee, or Stormwater Committee, over the past two years since I provided you the last update. Next slide, please. We're still working under the 2010 permit, MS4 permit, it's been administratively extended twice, a year and a half, it might be, we might be going for the third time, NDEP says we're next after Las Vegas, but it's not on the near horizon that we're aware of. So with that, we're still implementing the 2011 Stormwater Management Program, that plan that was developed by the Stormwater Committee back in 2010, 2011, that has over 125 best management practices, dispersed through seven program elements, that each agency within the Truckee Meadows, as well as the Stormwater Committee Coordinating Committee, must implement on an annual basis. We have to grade ourselves each year, the Stormwater Committee is responsible for grading ourselves, and we submit that assessment in our annual report to NDEP each year, which the committee puts together as well. We did that assessment last month, it's kind of painful, but we're going to be sending a good report to NDEP. So in that seven program elements, and those VMPs that are outlined in the swamp, the Stormwater Committee is responsible for two main program elements, and that's the public outreach and education element, as well as the water quality monitoring of the MS4, and the monitoring of the health of the tributary assessments. Those are line items in the swamp that we need to do on an annual basis. Next slide, please. So WRWC provides funding for the business of the Stormwater Committee each year, 262.5. The biggest outlay is the stormwater quality monitoring. Our contract with Balance Hydrologics this year is $215,000. We know WRWC, 75% of that, NDOT pays the remaining 25%. The other two line items that are major budget items in our overall annual budget is the miscellaneous stormwater quality management consulting services. We hire consultants to do things like update our website, which is a line item, update a watershed management tool, which is a line item in the swamp, update trainings if we need them, it's a line item in the swamp, and so those monies are dedicated to those. And then staff report for the business of the Stormwater Committee, meeting minutes, providing trainings, et cetera, writing the annual report. Yeah, so that's the overall budget, the workings of the Stormwater Committee, and so the next several slides, I'm going to go into what the committee has done, how that money has been spent over the past couple of years since the last update. Next slide, please. So the committee produces a lot of documents we have over the years, a number of manuals, a number of field guides, a number of trainings, and we didn't have a logo. So now we have a logo that shows the hard work that the committee really does behind the scenes. We also have three new members in the past 18 months, two from Washoe County, one from City of Sparks, it's great to have new blood on the committee, fresh ideas, fresh perspectives, they ask great questions on why we do what we do. Over the last six months, I've been providing presentations to these new members in the public meetings we have each month, high-level discussions on our water quality monitoring, where we monitor, what we monitor, why, how these were selected. We had a great presentation from Kara last month on the Integrated Source Water Protection Program that the committee was involved in, the Water Quality Accrediting Program the committee is involved in, we had a presentation on that. So educating these newer members on the work that continues over a number of years. Next slide, please. So in the past couple of years, we've developed new trainings and revamped trainings, so like I said, public outreach and education is an important part of what the committee does. There's line items, BMP line items, that says that shall train your construction inspection staff each year, that shall train your municipal, your maintenance and operations staff each year. So we developed a brand-new BMP training for routine maintenance operations, we developed the training for HOAs on how to maintain their stormwater infrastructure. At City Arena, we get a lot of calls from the HOAs regarding their infrastructure, that was well-received, and is backed this year by popular demand. Construction site inspections, we revamped that training in collaboration with NDEP, and, and so on and so forth. So next slide, please. We updated TMstormwater.com this past year, we hired a consultant to do that, that is a line item in the Stormwater Management Program that we need to keep that update and relevant. The cool thing in the new website is all our trainings were recorded, those videos are on the website for people to access for a resource. We continue to maintain the good relationships we have with the other agencies in the Truckee Meadows and the nonprofits. I list a few here, a new collaborator for the committee is the Great Basin Outdoor School, we were working with them on revamping the Truckee Meadows Snapshot Day. Next slide, please. Truckee Meadows Watershed GIS Tool, this is a line item in the swamp, we're required to have and maintain. The old one was on a Adobe Flash platform, which is now no longer supported. It was geared towards a younger audience, young school kids, we took the opportunity, hired a consultant to update that on a new Esri platform, it has a lot of cool information in there, it hasn't launched yet, but we have trailhead information, location information, we have information about the hikes you can take in each watershed, unique characteristics of each stream tributary, a lot of good information for the public to use. And down below, there is a map that's also on that tool that shows 26 tributaries that eventually make their way into the Truckee River, and residents can look at where they're located and see that, oh, we live in Chop Creek Watershed, and get information about the activities that they can do on their property to help improve waterfall within that tributary. And so with that, that's a good segue into the next couple of slides, and the ask that we're, the funding requests that we're making to this committee. Could you, next slide, please. Yeah, so the, we're asking for $65,000 to fund the watershed assessments for fiscal year 24, and this is also a line item in the Truckee Meadows Swamp. It says in there that watershed assessments will be conducted on an annual basis. Unfortunately, due to funding constraints over the years, the great recession, and other things COVID, we haven't been able to conduct those assessments on an annual basis, but, and in the past, we've been able to absorb those costs within the $262,500 budget that we've had, we're no longer able to do that. But this year, in the scope, we had Ellen Creek, Somerset Creek, Galena, and Thomas, and the number of, several reaches within each tributary. We were informed yesterday that White's Creek is an important creek that needs to be included, and I just wanted to go over briefly how we determine which creeks are assessed each year. In the committee, we asked each agency, Sparks, Washoe County, City of Reno, which creeks are they monitoring, what information do they have, which creeks do they want assessed? We also looked at past history and see which ones are due for, which reaches are due for assessment, and then with that information provided from the other committee members, we develop a scope of work to provide to a consultant. So yesterday, we received information that White's Creek needed to be assessed, and so I've added that here, and in the past, NDOT has contributed 25% to the watershed assessments, but that was under the umbrella of the 262.5 Stormwater Committee budget. This is a separate ask, but it's important that we monitor our tributary health, we're only doing, you know, maybe five to 10 reaches each year, it's important that we continue the assessments on all our major creeks through the Truckee Meadows. So I was hoping that I could include White's Creek instead of get rid of Thomas Creek, and somehow, talking with our attorney and developing the agreement that NDOT might possibly contribute additional funding to this, because we do have an agreement with NDOT, and they will fund up to $70,000 each year for stormwater committee activities. So I'm not quite sure how that's going to work out, but it's out there on the table. Otherwise, if that can't be worked out, then we would replace, as it's been suggested, White's Creek, Thomas Creek with White's Creek. So, yeah, and next slide, please. Yeah, I wanted to explain why we're coming to you all for additional funding. The slide shows, back in 2019, on the far left, that lime green column shows our funding at 262.5, the stormwater funding is right here. The water quality monitoring of our streams and MS4 was at just under $150,000, with WRWC paying 75%, NDOT paying 25%. We had a good chunk of money that we could do additional work, hire consultants to do watershed assessments if we didn't have other items that needed to be done that year. So that was pretty easy to manage. This year, in 2024, our budget, our water quality monitoring agreement with Balance is $215,000, so with WRWC paying 15, 20, 75% of that, NDOT paying 25%. The additional money to fund the other business of the committee is taken up, so we just don't have the funds to conduct those watershed assessments. So that's why we're here before you today, for you to recommend that funding request to WRWC. It's very important that we continue to assess White's Creek right now because of the damages affecting Tomwas, one of Tomwas' water systems there. It's important to assess the proper functioning condition over time, the health of our streams, because they all flow into the Truckee River and are a major source of water quality, or major, major source of drinking water and protecting the water quality of that is important. So that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Do we have any questions?
If you mind going back to that previous slide.
Can you explain, I'm confused by your graph. You've got a green showing WRWC funding, and then you have a blue showing WRWC funding.
Yeah.
What, what are, are there two separate sources of funding?
No, that's broken out, so this green, it's 262.5 all the way across. This, so here's the legend down here, this is the stormwater quality monitoring agreement that we have each year with Balance Hydrologics. And what this graph is showing is how that funding, that work increase is really eaten into the other portion of our budget. So this represents the WRWC funding, the 75% of the stormwater quality monitoring. I apologize, I didn't make that clear.
How come the green says WRWC funding?
Because this is the 262.5 that we receive each year.
So you get that, plus you get the blue?
No, 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 this, this money is, this funding is taken out of, that's a line item in that.
It's a subset, okay.
Yes.
All right, I thought it was in addition to, sorry.
The blue and purple equal the green, John.
I figured, I.
Thank you, the blue and the purple equal the green, which is the total stormwater monitoring budget, the contract we have with Balance Hydrologics each year.
Because we provide, WRWC provides the 262, right?
Yeah, and that's this.
And then, okay, that's just how it's palucking.
Yes, and so this chunk is, this chunk, well, this chunk is taken out of the budget, and this chunk is taken out of that budget as well.
Okay, thank you.
So NDOT bears 25% of that cost because their roadways contribute to the tributaries and the Truckee River as well, so.
And then a second question, so the 65, that you're, that's in addition to the 262, is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then if I could have one, make one more comment, I wanted Kara to comment on Tomwas, sorry to hit you cold, but Tomwas efforts on White's Creek, and looking at really the watershed in the national forest area because of what's happened up there.
Right, so we are going to contract and have a consultant look at the reach basically upstream of the treatment plant, more or less above Timberline Drive, all the way up kind of towards the headwaters of White's Creek, to see if there's any opportunities, mostly to see what issues there are, and then kind of a high-level idea of restoration. In August of 2022, there was a huge storm cell that sat over White's Creek, and it downcut the creek, and there was just kind of unprecedented erosion, and we've been having really ongoing issues with turbidity at the Mount Rose Water Treatment Plant as a result, so just decompos granted, just coming down all for the last year, pretty much.
And you'll find that same thing in Galena Creek when you look at it, it actually plugged up Montrose Golf Course intakes completely for a period in time.
Right, and we do have Galena Creek on there, there is severe undercutting of those banks, and so we've assessed that two years in a row, or we hope to, so.
So I'm sorry, one more question.
Yeah.
You do these assessments, then what? You do these assessments, identify severe undercutting, you got all these erosion problems, then what?
Right, those reports go to each individual agency, and these assessments, along with the water quality monitoring, it's each agency's responsibility to provide the funding, the design, and the construction for the reaches of stream within their jurisdiction. So Washoe County, last year's assessment along Galena Creek, that memo was provided to Washoe County, and North Truckee Drains memos were provided to Sparks, and I forget which reaches, City of Reno. No, the, the, the report goes out to everybody, but it's each agency's responsibility to implement the projects that need to be implemented within their jurisdiction, so White's Creek with the Washoe County.
I'm sorry, but how many projects have been implemented based on these assessments?
That I'm not sure, I know that City of Reno, we're trying to work on White, excuse me, Chop Creek, and actually Dry Creek, we've implemented two projects along Dry Creek as well, so, but I don't know about the other two agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, okay, so unfortunately for you, this is, Stormwater is what I know the least about, you gotta help me out. I assume there was some sort of risk ranking, some criteria established to identify what creeks you were going to assess, you were going to ask for the funds to assess this year. We'd love to see every creek every year, we know we can't afford that, right?
Right.
So this last-minute addition of White's, first, you said twice yesterday you were informed, who informed you? That's my first question.
Birgit informed me.
And so based on, I guess what I'm looking at is, my assumption is the first, the staff report we got identified four creeks, but I assumed were identified out of the, however many you said were tributary to the Truckee, as the most important, and, and we're looking for a last-minute change, walk me through the process, I mean.
Yeah, so like I breezed through very, very quickly, trying to be cognizant of everyone's valuable time, each year, when we do have watershed assessments, we poll the members of the committee, so two from Washoe County, two from Sparks, and City of Reno members, at what creeks, if there's any known problems within their jurisdiction, known problems that they're aware of. So for instance, last year, we looked at Galena, that's a known problem, we looked at a reach, for Washoe County, they identified a reach along Jones Creek that we looked at and had assessed. City of Sparks, there was a number of areas along North Truckee Drain, and so we gather information that way, and then we look as well as when the last reaches were assessed, because the point of the assessments are to track, track trends over time. Some of these creeks are in various states of proper functioning condition, if they're on a degrading trend, we have to track that, if they're static, just track the overall health of these creeks. So it's, I guess, not that scientific, it's, you know, is there a need, and when was the last creek reach, creek reach assessed? You know, I say that there's 26 creeks in there, Franktown, some of the Washoe Valley creeks are in that. We assessed Franktown after the fire, the Little Valley Fire, so we did an assessment for that, but we don't go in there very often at all. The creeks that are within the Truckee Meadows development area, urban area, we assess far more frequently, so White's, Chop, Dry.
So let me, so then you go, I'm assuming, are you asking for more money, I mean, the staff report says 65, you're adding your 25% increase, what you're asking the work to do, I'm assuming there's more money associated with that.
That is if I can get NDOT somehow to contribute 25%. So it, it's easy under the stormwater budget because NDOT augments our budget up to $70,000 a year, that's an agreement that we have with NDOT, we have, they contribute 25% to the water quality money. They contributed 25% to the stormwater, the watershed assessments, but that was when it was funded under the stormwater budget. This year, we just don't have the funds to do that.
Understood, so, so White's Creek essentially NDOT will pay for that, who is what you're hoping?
Well, I'm hoping that NDOT will pay 25%, White's Creek is going to be in there regardless, we're going to swap out Thomas Creek for White's Creek, but what I'm hoping is that we can keep Thomas Creek in there if we can figure out a way to assess Thomas Creek as well.
See, that's the part that bothers me, is that the Stormwater Committee made a recommendation of four creeks, and yesterday, it looks like you were changing it, without the benefit of the people who made the recommendation having input to that change.
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
Perhaps you can, because I reviewed the staff report yesterday and had a discussion with Kim and Birgit, I don't believe the Stormwater Committee is aware of the magnitude and the damage on White's Creek, and the sediment transport issues that that creek is having. We monitor White's, Galena, Thomas Creek, and others, and we're well aware of it, and I asked if we could potentially substitute White's Creek for Thomas Creek, because Thomas Creek did not have any of the issues that both White's and Galena Creek experienced. That was the ask, is whether we could substitute White's for Thomas, based on our knowledge of the issues up there, and the Stormwater Committee may or may not even be aware of it. We deal with it every day.
One other point that I'd like to make is that the Thomas sections are within City of Reno, the White's sections would be within Washoe County, so I think that swath is probably equitable.
All right, I want to switch gears, I'm, I'm still just a little uncomfortable with that, but I'm just, just me. In the scope from NCE, they specifically called out the guidelines they were going to use, this document from BLM, I think it's BLM document, but they referenced the 98 version, and again, because I don't under, this is the stuff I don't understand. So I did a little research, there is a 2015 version, that's an update to the 98 version, that addresses improvements in analytical technique, blah, 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 I printed it out, because again, I don't know anything about this. No, I do recognize sometimes, sometimes agencies, you want to adhere to an older standard for consistency or for some technical reason, so that's why I'm asking you, is that the case here?
Yes.
Thank you.
But excellent point, and next year, we'll definitely look at the latest and greatest proper functioning condition documents, and see if using the later documents is a better fit for what we're trying to accomplish.
Thanks, sir.
Further comments from the board? Yes.
Thanks for the presentation, Lisa, that's helpful. So just to clarify with the scope here, when you have these priority reaches, just the three, that would be if the budget was only 25,000, but for 65,000, you're anticipating doing all of the reaches? doing all of the reaches?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, so 25,000 is what we could do with this, with the stormwater budget.
Okay.
Good question. How much does the NPDES permit play with regard to the scope that you're trying to improve or achieve, you know, success on the operation of these watersheds?
Yeah, so like I said, in the Stormwater Management Program Plan, a watershed assessment is a line item in that program that is one of the 125 BMPs that the agencies said that they would do, implement each year, and so it is a line item in there and it actually says that you will assess these on an annual basis, but we haven't been able to do the lack of funding. So it is a requirement of the MS4 permit because the MS4 permit requires that we develop a program, it was developed by the agencies and we agreed to collectively to implement these 125 BMPs, of which the watershed assessment is one. I mean, I don't think we're going to get fined if we don't do this assessment, but it, we do have records since 2005, we've been tracking the health of these streams over that time and I think it's important to continue that work and assess and track how development is impacting these streams and more importantly, whether or not the agencies have the funds to do water restoration, stream restoration projects, I've found personally that it's really difficult to get the funding for these because there's so many other immediate demands for that money that unfortunately these fall low on the priority list, but that, it's still important to assess how the health of these streams are tracking over time. Is it rapid decline, is it static, is it improving? So I think it's a valuable effort.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, if there's no further questions. Birgit, what are your, for the record, so you've heard from Ms. Jones that there have been some changes and the scope of work attached to this agenda do not reflect that, therefore the staff report recommendation would need amendment saying scope of work with changes if it's made. Thank you.
I would like to entertain a motion for approval. Agenda six, I'll just reread that action, professionals, wrong one. Approve the Truckee Meadows Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee's watershed assessment scope of work and revise scope of work.
Let's see, as amended by the presenter today. So said, not to exceed $65,000 fiscal year 2024. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second that.
Alan Jones.
Discussion, please. Michael, I just want to make sure you're comfortable with that.
So, I mean, comfortable is too strong, I'll support the motion, but if White's Creek is in such degraded condition and yes, I realize it's a drinking water source of the community, so maybe it's a little bit more important than Thomas Creek, that, as you described, it is pretty bad condition, could have been brought in a timely fashion to the Stormwater Committee for them to consider in their recommendation.
So that's a good, I was actually surprised that it wasn't included on there, so I don't know if Teresa, is there any history, was there even an awareness of the Stormwater Committee of the issues on White's Creek?
No, not that I'm aware of, we, like I said, we polled each of the members from each agency.
Is Tom, are you represented on Stormwater?
No, it's the three entities.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Stormwater Committee is Washoe County, two members from Washoe County, two members from City of Sparks, two members from City of Reno, we have an interlocal agreement that says that the committee is responsible for managing and ensuring implementation of the Stormwater Management Program. That was developed by the same three agencies. So like we said, everything that we do is voted on, we poll each agency for the creeks and we were not aware of the condition of White's Creek, otherwise it would have been on there. That's my phone, I'm sorry.
So I think, like, it was just not in their purview.
Yeah.
And we see it daily and not just on White's Creek either because we're looking at things with a little different lens and so just seeing that it was missed, that was the request I made was, if we could do it, was to substitute White's Creek over Thomas Creek because of the issues that we're well aware of on there, that apparently Reno and/or Washoe County are not aware of.
And I'd like to make one other point, with a broader base, with broader base funding for the water assessments, if White's Creek would have been on there just because and we would have known about it with these assessments, I mean, that's what these assessments are for, is to identify areas that are our problem areas, like Galena Creek, I mean, underneath the Galena Bridge, there's some severe undercutting of the banks, the abutments of that bridge is way up on the hillside, so it's not imminent danger of making the bridge fall down, but underneath there's active erosion and downpetting, hydro modification of Galena Creek through that bridge. So that's the type of key findings that the watershed assessments bring to light to the agencies.
First and a second. So much for your short meeting.
Can I bring it?
Yes, Alan.
Perhaps someone should be involved in that selection, I mean, not part of the interlocal agreement, but when they're assessing all these drainages, obviously someone has some issues with some other drainage, they should be part of that discussion when selecting them, so maybe that's something we should do.
I, that's an excellent point, on all our items, there's opportunity for public comment as well, so there's definitely an avenue to bring these things to light that, you know, I want to say that the Stormwater Committee, we have our day jobs and then we have the Stormwater Committee, it'd be nice if there was dedicated staff to that, but you know, we're all spread really thin and the more information that we can be provided, you know, the better product we deliver to the committee, to the community, yeah.
We just weren't aware of the issue.
Yeah.
Anything further? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carry that on to agenda item six, action, presentation, discussion, possible direction of staff and approval of the scope of work and funding, not to exceed $25,000 from the Water Management Fund for professional services agreement that Jacobs Engineers or Per and Tali Fluoraco Substances Consulting Services, Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, members of the commission, that is a mouthful, that Per and Tali Fluoraco Substances, we call it PFAS for short, I forgot to say Kim Rigdon for the record, the Western Regional Water Commission back in June had requested, and the PFAS was being thrown around in conversations and at different events, and they had requested that the WRWC staff provide professional expert presentations to the board so that they better understood what PFAS is, they know where it comes from and they better understand the regulatory framework that's continually evolving as we move forward in water planning. So I have been working with regional partners, Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, I've been coordinating with John at Tamoa, I'm sorry, Director, and Lo at Tamoa, and we've been putting our heads together to make sure that we have a good congruent education and message that we present to our boards so that they can speak to their constituents about PFAS because it's a complicated subject and it's technical. So we decided that we would request a scope of work from Jacobs Engineering, they're working with, I think Tamoa has retained them as a technical point of contact for them as well, to come and do presentations to our boards. We have a couple of board presentations, actually the North Valleys, I'm going to get this wrong, Trina, North Valleys Water Management Subcommittee Meeting is October 16th and then the Western Regional Water Commission Meeting is on the 18th, and so this initial $25,000 ask is for us to retain Jacobs Consulting Firm to do presentations, they're going to develop the presentation for the North Valleys event and then we'll refine that for the Western Regional Water Commission because they have different timeframes, they have more time available at the North Valleys event than they would at the Western Regional Water Commission. And then at that time, we'll work with the partners to look at what other technical assistance they can provide and where we need to tap into them for some technical expertise when needed. So this contract is a $25,000 contract, staff is requesting this amount because we'd like to bring that presentation to the WRWC and the program manager may saw, I have authority with the approval of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission for funding under 20, 25,000 or under to execute that contract with the permission of the Water Planning Commission. With that, Trina is also here with the City of Reno Utility Services Director to answer any questions, so with that, Chairman, I'd like to turn it back over to the board for questions or comments.
Do we have any questions?
I have a very short, probably related question for Ms. McGoon, the class action lawsuit that's been floating around the valley with the various agencies, did Reno make a decision on joining or not joining the class action lawsuit with respect to PFAS?
Reno has joined.
Okay, sorry, I told you it was short.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion then.
Move to approve. Drinkware.
Second, no.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our favorite agenda item. Number seven, action, workshop, discussion, possible direction of staff on the results of fiscal year 2025 annual Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission Priority Setting Workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Kim Rigdon for the record, so this is the meet of our meeting today, our priorities workshop, this party's workshop is held annually for any members that haven't participated, I think everybody in this room participated last year, Cardi, did you? And what the purpose of this workshop really is to go through the projects and priorities, reaffirm that they're important to the board and the members of the commission and look at how to rank them in a way that we can include them and inform the fiscal year 25 budget that we'll recommend to the WRWC in the spring. So this is the start of that process. Included in the staff report is the attachment of all the, actually the exercise you're going to be working through today with the summary of all the projects and what we'll be doing is ranking those projects, I think, like I said, I believe everybody in the room has done that, so you let me know if you want me to go through the process with you, I have instructions on how we can do that. But what I'd like to do first is allow time for the commission to ask questions, have discussion, talk about the budgets on any of the projects or propose any additional projects or parties that you feel would be important to include. If we do include new concept projects, I can easily, we can take a break and I can easily include them into the priority setting exercises survey poll that we do, so you let me know, the commission will need to give direction to me on whether we want to include additional projects and if we don't, then we can move on with the exercise. One thing I wanted to touch on is some of the projects you'll see do have a budget and they're, you'll, they're annual projects that we fund year to year, just like the Stormwater Committee project, other projects are multi-year contracts for specific activities and tasks that have a time, a project end date, and then there's other projects that are concept projects that were brought forward by members of the commission to take a look at, we may need to develop a scope of work or a budget for those projects, so those will have a to be determined budget that can be incorporated at a later date. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn the time over to the commission for discussion, questions on the projects, I didn't plan to go through every single project because I know that most of the commission is familiar with them, but definitely want to answer any questions or give an overview or update on any of the projects as necessary.
With that, open up this agenda item for discussion on any of these projects.
I'll start off, I've got a question about the Cold Springs water budget, are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am.
Well, I understand that there's been a previous modeling exercise done by the Heinz Rand folks, the Great Basin Motors, and so this is over and above.
Yeah, so Antec used to be Cardinal, he's going to look at that work and any additional work, there was some work done by the state too, that John Anno provided, we're going to look at all the data, that's one of the tasks, first task is to look at all the existing data and combine it all into one, one water balance.
Okay. Any other discussions, John?
I just had a question on, so some of these have budgets, I'm just a little confused because some of these, I think, I feel like they've already been approved by, some have been approved, some haven't been approved, that's what's kind of throwing me off, like data instincts, I think that was approved just a month or two ago, whereas like Mike was talking about, the Cold Springs one, it has a budget, but it hasn't been approved, I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why there isn't that distinction made in here already, if we've already approved something, it would be nice to know.
That's a good, good comment and I thought I had, I guess I didn't, I thought that I had put multi-year contract and information on there that I did not include, so I apologize. So it might have been in the description, but I know you're correct, I didn't indicate whether each one was, but here I have available for you very quickly.
So perhaps in the future, the next time this agenda item comes around, make that distinction and then just rank unbudgeted programs?
Yeah, and what I did was, and I should have included this in the board packet now that I understand what needs to be conveyed, when I work with each of the commissioners, what I do is I send out the previous year's budget with the current budget and it's usually this worksheet that I emailed out so that everybody could look at, well, what is a multi-year contract, what's an annual agreement, what's been funded, what's to be determined and what's the scope of work. So I apologize, I should have included this in the board packet, that's a really good insight. We can go through it very quickly, can leave this up on the screen so we have a better idea of which projects are already.
The ones that aren't approved would be good and that's probably easier.
Okay, so the projects that have not had a scope of work approved and do you want me to distinguish between the contracts that get approved annually each year based on a priority setting, ranking? Okay.
We don't need to complicate it.
I mean, obviously, if we're contractually committed to a second or third year of a project, there's no point in us discussing this.
Okay.
If we have an opportunity to say yes or no to something.
Yeah, so I agree.
Okay, so obviously the update to the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee Water Management Plan Program, that one does not have a scope of work, that's a new project, concept project that's been on the budget for a few years and you heard from Teresa today that until that MS4 permit is updated, they're not going to update their program, so they're kind of holding that position on the list so that when that program needs to jump into their update, we can bring it before the commission to look for some funding for that. So that's one that doesn't.
Which one was that?
That is the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee. That is the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee. It should be $100,000 to update their program. And that is.
Which is their second project.
Thank you.
Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee. Two, six, three, five.
And then there's another one, and that's budget to be determined. Yeah, if there's any one that's identified as budget to be determined, we either don't have a scope of work or that has not been entered, we haven't entered into an agreement on that project.
So from what I see, the Cold Springs, Stormwater Permit update, and then PFAS are unfunded.
Well, yes, the Cold Springs water balance is currently unfunded. We were going to bring that before the committee today for funding, but we had to pull the item until Senator Smith returns.
One on the top of page four, that Water Quality Credit Program.
Yes.
Know that's an ongoing one?
It is. We extended that one this last year for another year to see if they could get a DEP re-engaged in the process.
Did the OWN expert panel review, that's completed?
That is completed.
And then the FOP, I just stopped with it.
Yes, and Tamoa is going to fund that project, or that priority setting. That was the expert panel.
Are there any other questions about some of these projects? I've seen any, and so how should we proceed with this? John?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to have a brief discussion, hopefully, on like projects we could consider in the future. We kind of had a conversation about this the other day, and Trina was included in that too. And it's about White's Creek below our treatment plan. But there's, maybe, Trina, you could help by talking about kind of the new FEMA mapping that's being done for that.
Sure, so FEMA came in for our community and said that they were remapping a number of our streams here locally. We've gone through a review process with them, and in particular, White's Creek has, it comes down out of the upper watershed and it breaks into four branches and irrigation diversion structure that's small. So while those irrigation versions may happen in low flows and higher flows, it's, well, a whole bunch of other things have happened in the watershed with development and just geomorphologic changes over time that determines how much flow goes down each of those branches. So historically FEMA used the peak flow rate of about 1,000 CFS at that apex, and then later a report by Celabar said, well, that's actually closer to 3,000, and you should really look at 3,000 in each branch. So we've had varying consistency in development requirements of what's happened downstream in that development. So when FEMA came in and remapped it, first of all, they didn't look at that diversion structure or any of the things in that kind of area that's really defining what happens there very well. So the county and City of Reno have gone back and looked at hiring a consultant. We have that scope of work. We are just about ready to execute that, to have a relook at it. And FEMA is allowing us to do this prior to them just determining what these floodplains look like, which we don't agree with what the method that they use. So we're going to update those methodologies. And then I think the longer vision might be to understand what the floodplains are today and then ultimately look at what maybe that structure should look like to divert those flows. And then I'm sure John can talk about the low flows that have water rights implications and return flow agreement to the Tuckey River implications associated with that same structure and what happens in each of those branches as it comes down through there. So again, Reno and Washoe County are currently working to offer as a contract to a consultant to remap that area. And I think once that's done, we might look at what makes best sense to, you know, maybe there's an ideal split flow in each of those branches that reduces flood risk mitigation downstream and works with the water rights requirements. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you very much. So I mean, my intent is to just put this issue on the record for future consideration because I think Reno and county's work will be very beneficial in moving forward. But as Trina stated, there are, there's water rights implications associated with the two. I mean, Alan, you're probably familiar with that diversion structure and there, we're having residents go up and throw rocks in one channel versus another so they get water in their branch instead of their neighbor's branch. And we're getting calls from the Sheriff's Department, and you probably are too. So it would be great to try to come up with a more long-term solution to that. So like I said, I just wanted it on the record. Maybe next year's priority setting after this work is done, we might consider some kind of a project associated with this diversion, whatever, structure. And the water rates considerations. So, thank you.
So shall we just proceed as per normal?
If the commission doesn't have any other discussion, questions for Thomas, I'm happy to move into the priority setting exercise. Okay.
Marv, do you have any thoughts on future agenda items or projects?
No.
Anyone else? We shall proceed.
Okay. So Jennifer, Jen, is going to pass out a sheet of paper that has the QR code. It also has a link. I know that last time I learned the hard lesson of not having internet, a good internet connection, and some people couldn't connect with their phones. So I just wanted to make sure you had a couple options. Jen is also sending out an email right now with the digital link. And I thought it might be a good idea included, it's completely up to each member of the commission to rank how you see that you can come up your own system, as long as you apply your system across the board. I got some questions from new members on, well, how should I rank? So I just put the ranking up like a, it's a sample that you could use if you weren't able or you wanted a real definitive ranking system to work by. And so my samples, you know, you would, for example, if you had a priority or a project and you felt that you liked the project, but you could wait for it to be funded for another year, that you could give it a one star. If it was a priority that you thought really should be at least partially funded year, you could give that a two star. If you think it's a party that should be funded, but really not at the expense of other critical projects, you could give it a three star. And a four star could be, you know, the party is critical and it needs to at least be partially funded this year, whereas a five would be the party is critical and should be fully funded in fiscal year 25. So this is just a sample guide to follow if you are interested in using it. And what we'll do now, I'm going to wait for Jen to let me know that the email was sent. For those of you that want to use the link, for those of you on your phones, you should be able to just scan the QR code and have access to the link.
Is there any way you could go just show us the budget totals so we know?
Absolutely. I wasn't going to because I didn't really want it to influence your, you know, the project being a party, but I see your point. So what I can.
But are we bumping up against, we're not bumping up against?
We are not bumping up against any ceiling at this point. Every project that's been proposed, we have money for. So this is more of an affirmation of, you know, reaffirming that you support the projects. So did everybody have a chance? If anybody has a problem and they don't have the QR code or the email or the link, please let me know.
I can't use this.
Did you get an email on your computer?
I can get email on my.
Okay, Jen just sent out an email with the link.
I looked early, I didn't see.
That was just in case people had problems with the link.
I haven't received, oh, I just did.
And while you're doing that, I'm going to fix my.
Yep, got it.
Okay, yeah. On the additional priority on the, I just, I forgot to delete that before we started, so I'm going to delete it. It'll force you to rank it, just rank it a one star because I deleted it off the survey results. I jumped again and had you guys start before I deleted it off the survey.
Look, John, this last screen is just for you. It says, take the survey again.
I know.
I bet you can take it again. It's still dotted.
The electronic dots in your box.
It is not in there. Turn the air down. I think I just saw what you were laughing at. I'll have you know, John, I did a, I'm in Toastmasters, and I did a Toastmasters speech on no more dots. I have to share it with you sometime. It's cute.
I wanted to add cloud seating to this, like zero stars.
Yeah. Actually, the states, but again, I think.
In memory of, not in the memory of Darren Price, zero stars.
What's he doing?
Seven, nine, eight.
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't talked to him in a long time. Fill all this out, but now I've got a required question.
Oh, is it the additional priority at the end? Just click a one.
Remember you did this to us, so when we ranked these priorities, priority one, is that high or low?
Low.
If it's a one star, it's a low.
No, like when we were ranked, oh, we got to shuffle so that got rid of Alan.
Yes, yes, and I remembered that, and I made sure that wasn't happening on this one. Yeah, so we should be good on that one.
Yeah, we ordered to take it two or three times.
Don't take it two or three times. We'll have to scrap it and start over. I think we have every member. Let's see if it refreshes. All right, we got seven. Okay, so I'm going to download the results and we'll display it so we meet our open meeting law requirements. It's pretty cool, huh? You were my inspiration for this tool. So just real quickly, for open meeting law purposes, I just want to show that all seven commissioners, all members are present and have all their names on. And we will scroll through. You can see all the scores for each category. I also copy over to make sure that the category matches the heading that I included in my worksheet so that the scoring matches up for each priority. So we'll just scroll through real quick and I'll let Legal tell me when I'm good. I'm good? All right. So then what we do is we go over here to the subjects, and I'm going to, real quickly, water supply got 20, water conservation, or flood control got 21, water conservation 16, wastewater 28, and stormwater 20. So I just like to do this to represent this as a, data sort this. That's weird. Should not have done that. Give me one second.
Can I have it on the left though?
It does. I just like to do it in descending order so you can see, but it's clear from the left that wastewater, reclaimed water project, recycled water projects got the highest ranking. And then it looks like next one is flood control and stormwater and water supplier are even with water conservation ranked last. So what that means for us for projects is, I'll do these. Let's see if I can do it right this time. Oh, it's doing it by alphabet. Hold on. Why am I not? I don't have my mouse. My hand is handicap without my mouse. up right now because I deleted them off the project list because they're closed. So, so we have plenty of money to fund the projects, gives us a nice cushy project contingency fund balance, or future projects balance. And so I will put it back on the results page so that you can take a look at it. And Chairman, if the members of the commission want to discuss and provide your-
I think it, what Martini suggested last time, I don't know that that's really relevant. I think we resolved his issues, his thoughts. But the survey results may be of interest to the Western Regional Water Commission, just to see how, what our thinking is.
I'm, sorry, we'll have two easy questions for Ms. Regan. One, do we have any constraints on our ending fund balance? Are we capped at how much we can roll over? Or do we have a minimum that we must retain just to be legal?
For, for carryforward?
Yeah, so if we budget 100% of the money, and we have a zero, but zero balance on June 30th, that's probably not how we want to run the store.
We incorporate that into the budget process. So we have, what I'll work with accounting and all the carryforward, it's usually about $400,000, $500,000.
Well, right now, you showed a, you showed a potential revenue of like 1.9 is what you just showed.
Which is a revenue?
No, no, not revenue, but expense.
Expense, professional services category. So this is just one category of the overall budget.
Right.
So we have, we have our-
If we spent it all, we'd be okay. We'd still be solvent.
Yes, because we have, we don't know, we have $2 million in the budget for professional services. That doesn't include operating expenses and existing fund balance and ending cash balance at the end of the year.
Is that up to what? You said that, like 1.4 or something like that?
For professional services project? We budgeted 1.9 last year, and we were fine.
These projects themselves?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, I thought you said 1.4.
It's 1.4.
All right, the second question, sorry, no worries. We have any general feel on, you know, we have this budget, and then we're 18 months out from the end of fiscal year '25, how we are on our estimates? I mean, everything we're bidding at, city's coming in over, right? So I'm assuming we're similar here. So how good is our budgeting, is the question?
Our budget looks good. We came in, actually, we just did our audit from last year, and we came in a little under, so we had more cash reserves.
So the estimate, the individual project, project estimates, we're doing pretty well.
We're doing really well.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment. I kind of have the same feeling you do about drawing a line, and I could use, if you could go back to that ranking of the projects, if you don't mind, just as an example, that the Tamaulipas Water Usage Review Program 23, this is something that's been funded every year. It's hugely popular with our constituents. This is actually sending out our water auditors to do, to go to individual houses when they have high water usage issues and stuff like that. And one-on-one, we help them find the cause of their high water use, hugely popular program. And like I said, it's been funded for a long time. And when you look at it like this, if you draw the line, it could drop off, and I don't think that's our right to, so. And it's also a major component of mandate for water conservation.
Yeah, and every year when I get the commission's comments, I'm always trying to figure out how to incorporate all the different aspects of how we consider the funding into this process. And it's not always easy to capture all the, you know, the differences in how we're funding things and informing the budget and concept projects versus existing contracts and things like that. So it is somewhat of a simplified version of just getting feedback from the members of the commission on how to inform the process moving forward.
So anything else from the commission? Are we finished with this agenda item?
We are finished. So what I would like to do is get direction from the board to bring the priorities, the priority setting results to the concurrent meeting with the Western Regional Water Commission on November 1st, so that they can ask questions from the members of the commission on-
I was listening, but I'm sorry, I missed it. We decided we are not going to draw, attempt to draw some sort of line, but, thank you.
I think that would simplify things for the electors as well.
So I'm asking for a motion to approve our results.
So moved.
Let me reserve a second.
I'll leave you. We amend that to forward the results to the WRWC.
Move to approve the results and have the program manager take these to the WRWC.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
So the eight, discussion regarding location and possible agenda items, and then WWC meetings and possible direction of staff.
I'll just give a quick overview, Kim, again, for the record. So the November 1st meeting, just a reminder, is our concurrent meeting with the Western Regional Water Commission. And we'll be going over the results of the priority setting today. We'll also be looking at, we're going to have to do a joint meeting approval, so you'll have to do a recommendation of the Cold Springs water balance, scope of work, to the WRWC for approval in the same meeting. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
There will be a meeting in October, November?
Yes, there's a November 1st meeting. My next meeting with the WRWC will be on the 18th, but then we'll come back and do a concurrent meeting with them. I do not have a December meeting scheduled. I normally don't, that week is a cheerleading competition week for my daughter, and I'm out of town. But I also, you know, we don't really have any, once we present this to the WRWC and we start looking at the budget, we've given a lot of project updates, there's not a lot of pending items to hold, you know, hold a meeting in December or January. That's why I put January to be determined. I know it's New Year's week, and many people are out of town, so I'll leave it to the board to discuss that schedule. If we do decide that we don't need a December or January meeting, then the next meeting could be held on February 7th.
Can you put a, top your head, have any comments about our next meeting after the November 1st joint meeting? Terms of a December or January meeting?
I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Would just suggest, I'd like to, at the November 1st meeting, make that decision, just to make sure if something blows up, we'll have an opportunity to have a December meeting. But, I mean, I'm inclined not to have it, but let's not make the decision until we have to.
No, that's why I bring to the mission. Very good. With that, then, commission comments? Staff comments?
Thank you, Chairman. I do have short, some short comments. I have been working with data instincts, and I did a survey, many of you saw the survey go out, on additional site visits, or visiting some of those sites in Calvera, Monterey, and Valley Water, as well as San Diego. I got 10 responses from both commissions, so I'm going to try to send a little teaser reminder out, hoping everybody will get back to me, even if they don't want to participate, to let me know that they don't want to participate. Because what we're going to be doing is figuring out how many seats we have, how many trips we can do, how many seats we have, and then extending those empty seats to appropriate staff. I'll work with the directors to figure out what staff they want to extend that invite to. So I just wanted to remind everybody, if you haven't taken that survey, please go ahead and take the survey. We're also initiating coordination with the Northern Nevada, I think the Northern Nevada Public Health Agency, that's their new name, to arrange a site visit that may be just specific to that group in mid-January. We'll see. I'm going to send out a survey to get some interest from them. If they, if we have enough interest and we have a few extra seats, then I'll go ahead and reach out to you as well, and see if there's any need to, or appropriate staff that should be at that particular site visit. So I just wanted to give you an update that we are working on those site visits, and I'll be bringing that information to you all. And that's all I have. Oh, can I say one other thing?
Well-
I did a soft kind of launch of our new, updated, facelifted Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission logo, and I don't know if anybody noticed, but we're pretty happy with it. I didn't know if the board had any comments about it, but send me your comments, and let me know if you like it. What we're going to be doing moving forward is really focusing on updating our website next. And as, before we move into the update of the regional water management plan, because we would like our website to be used as a tool to help us with that update. So we have a few things going, and if you like that logo, let me know. If you don't, and you hate it, let me know, because we're going to move forward with that. Thank you, Chairman.
See any public here, so we'll have.
I want to have them look.